For all non-registered voters, would please come up front. Ladies and gentlemen, please take a seat so that we may count our quorum. If the tellers would please come forward. In order to be counted, you must be seated. Please hold your cards high over your head. Do not keep them at waist level. The tellers cannot see them. Please be sure to keep them raised until the tellers have told you to put your row down, so they will let you know that they have counted. Again, all non-registered voters must be in the section up here if you're facing the On my right. John, can you speak into the microphone? Section 129, I'm not sure the microphone is on. Can you just turn it on, please? I think you have it. On my, on the right. Thirty-six, three-six. The center.
Ninety-three, nine-three.
The center ninety-three. On my left.
Fifty-two.
On my left, fifty-two. We have two hundred and ten voters in the hall. We have a quorum. A quorum being present, the meeting will come to order. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand. Ladies and gentlemen, we have with us tonight several veterans who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We now will have the singing of the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would just remain standing for just one minute. I would like to introduce to you our distinguished gentleman to my left. These are all veterans who represent one or more branches of the services that we have in this country. I would like to introduce you to Mr. Vernon Ingramham, who is a Wareham resident and served as an entryman during World War II, during the liberation of Rome, and who was wounded in Italy. Mr. Ingramham, thank you for your service to this country. Mr. Ingramham is going to serve as the grand marshal for our Veterans Day Parade on, I believe it's November 12th, on Monday. I hope all of you will come out and honor them as the way the town should. We also have with us Joseph Skip Sennelli, who is an onset resident who served as a flight engineer for two years on a C-130 in Vietnam, flying surveillance missions along the Ho Chi Minh Trail. Thank you, Mr. Sennelli. We appreciate your service. We also have with us Mr. James Newman, a Wareham resident who served in the U.S. Marine Corps. Jim is a Korean War-era veteran. He provided security at an ammo dump in Nebraska, prior to being assigned as an infantry division headed for Korea. Thank you very much, Jim, for your service for our country. We also have Mr. Ted Demoulin, who is an onset resident who served in World War II as an engineer on a Coast Guard cutter, providing convoy security between the United States and Greenland. And I understand, I think if I remember from the year that you led us in the pledge, that you were also on a rescue mission that brought back a boatload of orphans, seven-hundred-and-twenty Polish orphans. We thank you, Ted, for your service. We appreciate the fact that you served this country. If it weren't for you, gentlemen, and those other men and women who do this for us, we would not be here this evening to have the liberties that we do have. On behalf of all of the residents, I thank you wholeheartedly. If you would just remain standing for one more quick minute, at this time, I would ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Doug Westgate, who passed away, who served on the Conservation Commission for many, many years in the town of Wareham. So if we would just take a brief moment just to remember Doug. Thank you very much. You may be seated. And thank you to the Wareham High School junior ROTC. Ladies and gentlemen, our Board of Selectmen are still at their meeting. They have asked me to begin our meeting without them, so that we can continue on the business of the town, which is posted to begin at seven o'clock. Madam Clerk, if you will, would you read the posting in return of the warrants that was posted by the constable, so that we may officially open our meeting?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth S.S., to either of the constables of the town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the high school auditorium, 7 Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass. on Monday, October 22nd, 2012, to act on the following articles.
I will waive the reading of the articles.
You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof on or before September 14th, 2012, in at least one public place in each precinct within the town, and by publishing a copy of the warrant by September 20th, 2012. Hear of, fail not, and make sure due return of this warrant, with your doings thereon, to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting. Given under our hands this thirteenth day of September in the year 2012, Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who may be here for the first time and have never attended town meeting, I'm Claire Smith. I am the town moderator. Sitting behind me is Mary Ann Silver, who is our town clerk. It is required by law that she be here to record the minutes of our meeting and the votes. Is the rest of the board coming in?
They will be momentarily.
Okay. Sitting in the far rear of the stage is Mr. Brian Kudish, who is our town accountant. To my right is Mr. Derek Sullivan, our interim town administrator, Mr. Joe Ashley, who is the deputy moderator, and at the far end of the table, we have Mrs. Donna Bronck, who is chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Larry McDonald, Mr. Tom Worthing, Mrs. Marilyn Donahue, Mr. Frank Heath, and Mr. Sam Gray. And coming in behind me is town councilman, Mr. Richard Bowen. As you know, we have rules that dictate what happens at town meeting. I just want to briefly go over them. We follow the rules that are in Robert's Rules of Order, the 75th anniversary edition, town meeting time, town meeting tradition, and those rules set forth by the moderator in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 39. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by statute, such a vote may be declared by the moderator without account and be recorded by the clerk upon such declaration, provided that if seven or more voting members of town meeting doubt the vote, a counter vote shall be taken. This is in accordance with Article 12 of the October 27th, 2003 Town Meeting, and was approved by the Attorney General on November 21st, 2003. The warrant, which was duly posted in every precinct and posted on the town website, is our agenda for tonight's meeting. I will remind you that town meeting does not come to an end until all agenda items on the warrant have been decided, either by approval, or by being defeated, or by no action being deliberately taken. I will ask for a motion for each article. I want you to listen carefully to the motion as it's stated, since the vote and the debate is on the actual motion. You have a warrant before you, but sometimes there are some variables between the warrant and the motion. It is the motion that we will be debating and acting upon. The motions will be on the screen before you, so if you have any doubt, be sure to look up on the screen. That's where you will find the motion that's on the floor. Following the motion, the moderator is going to ask the proponent to speak to the motion. The moderator will then ask the Board of Selectmen for a vote of the board, and then a vote of the Finance Committee and their recommendation, and after which debate will be open. I would ask you to approach the two microphones on the left and right-hand side. Please state your name, and I would also ask that no more than two speakers be at a microphone at any one time. That's to keep an open aisle for fire protection. And I would strongly ask that your remarks be limited to the content and specifics of the article, and that way we can get through our articles fairly quickly. All comments are directed to the town meeting through the moderator. Speakers on the floor should not be interrupted by others. The only person that gives permission for anyone to speak is the moderator, so there should be no chit-chat among those of you sitting there unless I've told you you can do so. So we can get through much quicker if we keep comments at the microphone. The tradition of Wareham Town Meeting has been to allow the presenter of an article five minutes to speak and two minutes for all others who wish to comment. Therefore, I would ask the body, if you would like to stick to this tradition, and move that we continue it with the caveat that the moderator will not cut someone off in mid-sentence, but will give them the opportunity to finish with a warning that their two minutes has elapsed. I may also stop a speaker if we have heard the same thing for the past 10 minutes from eight previous speakers. Would someone like to so move that we continue this tradition? Do I hear a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? The proponents will have five minutes, and all other speakers will have two minutes. Amendments may be offered to any article being debated. To offer an amendment, you need to give the text to the town clerk in writing. The tellers do have a paper for you to fill out, and this is to ensure that the town clerk has the amendment word for word, so that it can be included in the report that she must file for the town. I will recognize the mover and amendment, and we will debate the amendment, and then we will take a vote on the amendment and go back to the original article. For reconsideration, we will follow the same tradition that we have had, that reconsideration will only happen under certain circumstances. It must be proposed on the night that the article comes before you. It must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side. It must be seconded. It is debatable, and it will only be permitted if there was hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or if there is additional information that was not previously available, or if there is a change situation that developed since taking the vote. Non-voters certainly are welcome to attend town meeting. They should be all up here on my left, and they can speak to town meeting only with permission of the voters. I will remind you, there is a no-smoking rule on school property, so that means you cannot scoot out to your vehicle and try to get a quick cigarette in. You must leave the premises entirely. I am going to ask you to turn off all cell phones and any other electronic devices that may be disruptive to any of your neighbors. Reminder, there's no food or drink allowed in the auditorium if you're parked in the fire lane. I would strongly suggest that you run out and move your vehicle, because they do enforce that. And if for some reason you need to exit the auditorium for any reason, please use this door on my left. Do not use the door on the right or the door to the rear, and that's to preserve the integrity of town meetings, so that we have a constant know-knowledge of those coming and going are actual voters. My photo policy, if there's anyone that intends to take photos this evening, they must take them from the press section. No photos may be taken during a vote, and I believe we do have a couple of press representing local newspapers that have asked for permission. Before we begin, Article 2, Section 26 of the Town Charter states that all department heads shall attend the sessions of town meeting for the purpose of providing the town with information pertinent to warrant articles, and I will call a roll call. We have the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, Board of Health, the Chief Assessing Officer, Community Development, Conservation, Council on Aging, Data Processing, EMS, Inspection Services. We have Town Administrator Acting In, Municipal Maintenance, Town Interim Town Administrator, Police Department, Shellfish Harbor Master, Town Accountant. We have the Town Clerk, Town Collector, Treasurer, Library, Water Pollution, and the School Department. Ladies and gentlemen, for just a final announcement, we have two young ladies from Wareham High School who have requested that they be granted permission to briefly address town meeting on a subject matter coming before the body, and they would like to present a petition on behalf of the students of Wareham High School relative to this matter. It has been tradition to allow our high school students to speak, and therefore, hearing no objection. I would like to welcome Nicole Nalt and Shalamea Erasme. Ladies, if you would please step forward to the microphone and present your petition.
New gym roof, the student's perspective. I'm Nicole Nalt.
And I'm Shalamea Erasme. Ware Junior is at Wareham Senior High, and having a leaky roof affects us all negatively. These are a few images of the gym when it rains.
We started the petition stating, "I, as a student of Wareham Senior High School, am requesting a new roof for the school gymnasium." Next. We've gotten four hundred and sixteen students to sign our petition, out of a total of six hundred and fifty students in the school. That's two-thirds of the student body.
These are the nineteen pages of the petition, which include students' signatures, their address to verify that they live in Wareham, and their year of graduation.
We have four hundred and sixteen signatures.
One of the reasons for our petition is that the leakage can cause mold or mildew, which is a health hazard to all students. Another reason is that gym class is becoming limited and/or dangerous.
Next.
The next reason is that sports are being forced to have away games, which increase the cost of transportation. Another reason is that the leakage can cause damage to the gym floor, which can lead to the need for future repairs.
Next. This is how the gym roof affects you, as citizens of Wareham. The school gym is an emergency shelter for the town, and it's an unsuitable one if the roof is leaking. That affects everyone, not just the students. Also, when schools suffer, so does your property value, because no one wants to go to a town where their school has leaky roofs. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, ladies, for presenting your petition, and we are happy to accept this. You've done a very nice job. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have our Board of Selectmen, we have our chairman, Mr. Steve Holmes, we have the clerk, Mrs. Cara Winslow, Mr. Peter Tittlebaum, Mr. Alan Slaven, and Mrs. Ellen Begley. Does the chairman of the Board of Selectmen wish to address the body?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town meeting. On behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you for your participation, and thank you for coming out. On a more business note, I think that in general, and it's always bad when you thank somebody for something, because then there are twenty-two people that are a problem after that, right? But I want to tell you that, you know, people are listening. At the last town meeting, we talked about finances, and we talked about revenue, and we talked about some other things, right? And if you haven't had a chance to read through your warrant article yet, there are four articles that are representative of either expense reduction measures, which generate revenue streams. Now, whether you elect to accept those or not, that's entirely your business. I'm not speaking either pro con. And our goal is that in April, when we meet again, that we can at least find four more or eight more. We'd like to double that for April, so that we can bring some revenue opportunities to the town, as we all have needs, right? But we can't get any more money out of the pie we have. So I hope that you can at least, whether you vote for them or not, at least appreciate that some effort has been put place there. And I would like to thank Salpina, our seated director, who is pounding on business doors, trying to drive business to Wareham. I'd like to thank Brian Kudish. I saw him behind me somewhere, our town accountant, who on a moment's notice prepared information for the various groups that needed them. And I know he's here somewhere. There he is, my favorite. Guy Campina, our wastewater treatment plant director. I'd like to thank those three this evening, because they've done a lot of work to bring these four initiatives to you and get them done for the fallen. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Town Administrator Derek Sullivan for his efforts. So welcome, and thank you. Hopefully, it'll be, hopefully, it'll be a quick-moving event, and I'll help that happen by just stop talking now, okay? Thank you.
That does help. Would the chairman of the Finance Committee like to address the body at all?
No, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the moderator also has the prerogative to discuss with the administration consent agenda items that might be able to expedite town meeting somewhat. I believe we have five articles tonight that we can do under a consent agenda. A consent agenda generally is something that would generate no controversy and that can be properly voted without any debate. It's usually regular housekeeping articles that come back every year, time after time, to which generally no one stands to speak, and they get passed very quickly without any debate. I will try to bring forth five articles, which I would hope that you would support in putting into a consent agenda. If you are not willing to, all you need to say is, "Hold on the article," and we will not do that, and we will put it back into the lottery system. Our first two that I would like you to consider as a consent agenda would be Article Number 12, which is a transfer of $25,000 from the Parking Meter Fund to the Sign Material Account, and Article Number 13, which is a transfer of $25,000 from the Parking Meter Fund to the Line Painting Account. These articles routinely come before every town meeting from the Municipal Maintenance Department. They generally do not spark any debate or any discussion. If I hear no objection, I would support a motion to take Article 12 and Article 13 as our first consent agenda. I have the motion before us in a second to take Article 12 and Article 13 as a consent agenda. All those in favor of supporting Article 12 and 13 as a new warrant, please say aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. The other three articles are articles that are coming before us, to which the motion, if they were being pulled by lottery, would be that these articles would be withdrawn. The first one is Article Number 22, which is a tax increment financing article proposed for Chatham Village croutons or mazetti. This article, we discovered earlier today, that actually is written within Article 23, so it's not needed, and therefore, the motion tonight would be to withdraw it. Article 24 is a transfer of the Hammond School that was put forth by the Cedar. Cedar has voted to withdraw the article and have further discussions with the Board of Selectmen, and maybe come back at town meeting, or whatever they decide to do. The third article would be Article 29, which is the hiring of four seasonal laborers, and this article also has a motion to be withdrawn. Does anyone have any objections to Article 22, 24, or 29? Hearing no objections, I would ask the Finance Committee to make a motion that we take Articles 22, 24, and 29, and that they be withdrawn.
I make a motion that we take Articles 22, 24, and 29 out of order, so that we can vote on withdrawing them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Does anyone have any objections to Article 22, 24, or 29? Hearing no objections, I would ask the Finance Committee to make a motion that we take Articles 22, 24, and 29, and that they be withdrawn.
I make a motion that we take Articles 22, 24, and 29 out of order, so that we can vote on withdrawing them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know by our charter, we draw our articles by lottery. Madam Clerk, would you please pull the first article? Article 23. Article 23 is now before you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, Article 23 is Tax Increment Financing Agreement. I move that the town vote to, A, approve the form of two tax incremental financing agreements by and between the town of Wareham, Wareham or the town, the T Marzetti Company, T Marzetti or the company, and the respective owners of land and buildings located at 15 and 20 Kendrick Road, currently on file with the Board of Selectmen. B, designate as an economic opportunity area both the land and buildings on two separate tax parcels, containing 6.17 acres located at 15 and 20 Kendrick Road, as further depicted on the Wareham Town Assessor's Map, 108 Block 1006, lots N and U respectively, and pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 23A, Section 3E. And C, authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute the TIF agreements, and to take such other actions are necessary or appropriate to implement the TIF agreements.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article, Mr. Holmes?
Madam Moderator, thank you, Steve Holmes, for a onset. I'd like the body to give approval, for my time, to Mr. Bob Foley from T Marzetti to speak on the article.
Mr. Holmes is not a registered voter, and Mr. Holmes is asking for courtesy of the floor?
May I am a registered voter?
No, I meant-
Mr. Foley is not.
Mr. Foley, I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Foley is not a registered voter.
Don't get Mrs. Winslow in an uproar there, because she'll, she'll take away my application for the committee.
She will. If there are no objections from the body, all those in favor, please, allowing this gentleman to speak. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the town, I present Mr. Robert Foley from T Marzetti. And Bob, I think you have, what, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, Bob, if you could come up here, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Moderator, and Chairman Holmes. Can't hear? How's that, is that better? Great. Whoops. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, you need to step right up to that microphone and speak right into it.
Right, how's that? Much better?
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, we're here this evening, first and foremost, just wanted to thank the town of Wareham. We've been before the town. My name is Robert Foley, I'm representing T Marzetti this evening. T Marzetti, if you don't know, they operate a manufacturing plant over on Kendrick Road. They manufacture Chatham Village all-natural croutons. They've essentially been busting at the seams, and are looking to expand. And before you this evening, Article 23 is, we would respectfully request your vote on approving this article, which, in essence, what it would do, is it would allow T Marzetti to move forward on pursuing some state investment tax credits that otherwise, it would not be eligible to apply for. And involves, the town, it's a net revenue gain here, in terms of real property taxes, of about $5,000 a year, which would be evenly split. There would be a $2,500 exemption for T Marzetti, thereby allowing them to apply for the state investment tax credits. Also, they're looking to expand their operations. There would be 25 net new jobs to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be located here in Wareham. There would also be a transfer of roughly 10 positions from a plant that they currently operate in New Bedford. And, you know, essentially, we just respectfully ask that you approve this warrant article this evening, so that the corporation can move forward and apply for the state investment tax credits. Otherwise, they'd be ineligible to do so. In a nutshell, I'm just moving things along. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. And also, present here tonight is Cliff Tabke, who is the plant manager at the T Marzetti Manufacturing Plant on Kendrick Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, three in favor, zero opposed, two abstained.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and the recommendation?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, six in favor, one against, and zero abstention.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 23? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article 23. Article 23 is to vote for a tax increment financing agreement. The motion before you is on the screen. You will be voting for what is on the screen, that is, the motion before you. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
It passes by a majority. Madam Clerk, our next article? Article 33 is to hear the report of the Board of Selectmen relative to the Westfield Project. May I have a motion from the Finance Committee to hear the report?
I move that the town vote to hear the report of the Board of Selectmen relative to the Westfield Project.
I hear a second?
Second.
I'm not sure if anybody actually wants to speak to the article. I'm sure we all want to hear the report, but if anybody wishes to speak to the article. If not, I will take a vote on the motion before us to hear the report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Mr. Holmes?
Board of Selectmen, Westfield Report updated. The Board of Selectmen appointed the Westfield Study Committee. The committee has been extended several times, and have expended many hours reviewing, editing, and updating all areas of the Request for Proposals, and advising the Board of Selectmen on the best possible ingredients to successfully develop senior housing at Westfield Site. The Board of Selectmen, working with the Westfield Committee, the Office of the Town Administrator, and Town Council, has developed and approved several Request for Proposals. These Request for Proposals were all returned with no developer responses. Workshops were scheduled for the town to meet with developers, and no developers accepted our invitation. The town also asked for suggestions from the developers, and response was minimal, ranging from money not being available for this type of project, to the political climate in Wareham. Going forward, the Board of Selectmen will continue to pursue options for senior housing in Wareham, and will report back to the Springtown Meeting in April of 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. We will accept your report, and please be sure that the Town Clerk has a copy of your report. Madam Clerk, our next article? Article 14 is to fund the Recycling Committee with an additional $3,000. May I have a motion from the Finance Committee?
I move that the town vote to fund an additional $3,000 to the recycling expense budget, thus increasing the total budget to $8,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article? On my left?
Madam Moderator, my name is Jennifer Gady. I'm the Chairman of the Wareham Recycling Committee.
Can you speak right into the microphone, please?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, the Recycling Committee is asking for this additional funding in order to maintain our presence in Wareham, and to continue the operation of our drop-off center in East Wareham, the only such center in the town. The center has been in operation for over 15 years, and services 150 to 200 recyclers per week. The number does increase in the summer months, as summer residents and visitors seek out the services at the center to continue the recycling they practice in their hometowns. The center is open two days a week, Wednesdays from 12 to 3, and Saturdays from 9 to 1, and is staffed by volunteers, who handle over 160,000 pounds of recyclable material every year. The operation is overseen by a recycling coordinator, whose various duties include the tracking and reporting of solid waste and recycling material handled both in the town and at the center, developing and administering a budget for recycling activities in town, and reconciling our budget and our revolving fund with the Town Accounting Department. The coordinator submits this information for the annual town report. The coordinator also recruits and schedules volunteers to man the East Wareham Drop-Off Center, and works with the schools to encourage recycling and participation among students both in school and at the center. In addition, the coordinator applies for available grants, and administers a community service program at the center that provides an opportunity for persons required to do service as an alternative to fines or incarceration. Other duties of the coordinator include responding to queries, telephone and otherwise, about recycling, and initiating projects to promote and encourage recycling in the town. It has been suggested by some who oppose this warrant request, that our recycling center is redundant, and that citizens may take recyclable materials to other centers located in Marion and Rochester with the purchase of a sticker. These centers concentrate on trash, and are not dedicated solely to the proper handling of recyclable material. Thanks to CMAS, we are able to accept and properly dispose of mercury items, such as thermometers, light bulbs, et cetera. In addition, the other centers do not handle paint, tires, batteries, or medical waste sharps, which the Wareham Recycling Center does. We are also the only location where latex paint is taken and disposed of properly, approximately 300 gallons per year. Many of the recyclers who come to our center live in apartments, condos, and mobile home parks, where they have trash picked up as a service, but no provision for recycling. We at the center provide an essential service to the town, and an opportunity for citizens to support a clean environment. These are some of the reasons we are urging you to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a vote, the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, four in favor, one opposed, and no abstentions.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, three in favor, four opposed, no abstentions.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the article? On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Brenda Extra, Y. Chinasav. I'd like to encourage the body to vote against this article. The Recycling Committee was created, and is supposed to be self-sufficient. The coordinator's position was originally the idea of the Recycling Committee back in 1995, where it was supposed to be paid out of the revenues that were generated from the Recycling Committee. The town has, in its budget, a $50,000 revolving fund. That $50,000 is a cap, and any money that they make over that is supposed to come to the town as part of our general fund. But instead of that, what they have done, slowly but surely, have reduced the money in that revolving account, so that they only have a few thousand dollars less. Contrastly, the coordinator, which was supposed to be paid out of the fund, the coordinator's budget has gone up, salary has gone up, from a contract of $135 a week to $168.75 a week in the past two years, which is over $8,000 a year. Now, I can appreciate the work that the Recycling Coordinator does. However, the recycling center is open five hours a week. As far as scheduling volunteers, doing reports, having requirements by law, we have many statutory boards-
20 seconds.
Thank you. We have many statutory boards in this town that have been doing this on a volunteer basis, doing similar things. As far as what is so special about putting things there, you have latex paint. A simple call to the DEP will tell you to put kitty litter in the paint, close it up, let it sit, and you can throw it away with the regular. So I urge you, please, to vote against this, and let them either pay for themselves, or we should come up with another way to do it. Thank you.
Selectman Begley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Right now, the budget is $5,000 for recycling, and there, to operate the department, currently stands at $11,436. However, the salary item of that is $8,400. So, the majority of the money that's being raised is going to pay the coordinator. And as much as I absolutely understand the work that goes into things, other volunteers are also doing an extraordinary amount of work without pay. They are, we have zoning board people that go to sites, that have to prepare reports, that have to consult with attorneys. We have a lot of people that are definitely doing a lot of work. The recycling center is an integral part of this community, no question, but for 150 or 200 people. And we have thousands of people right now that do get curbside recycling. And it's mandatory by the waste people that they do not charge extra. And I feel like we're charging the rest of the town extra by giving more money to this. I know $3,000 doesn't sound like much, but as we go into the Springtown Meeting, and we see the huge deficit that we may be facing, and we're going to have to be cutting, we cannot afford to increase. So I urge you to vote no on this article.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Bill Heaney, Precinct 1. I just have a question of the Finance Committee. The majority of the Finance Committee voted against this. Is there a single reason, or a couple of reasons, why you did that?
To answer the question, if you choose?
Yes, there was a very, very plain reason, and the reason being is, I know it's only $3,000, but we're headed into the spring, and we know we're going to come up with over a million-dollar deficit. This $3,000 doesn't seem like much, but there are a lot of folks that do do a lot of volunteer work here, and we just felt that it was the precedence, when I say "we," I mean myself as well, because I voted against it. And that was the basic reason, it's just pure economics. The concept is wonderful, and we feel really badly, but we just don't need to pay that $3,000 right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Okay, one other question, and it may be for the Finance Committee as well. Where is the $3,000 proposed to come from?
To answer the question, I believe our interim Town Administrator, Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Madam Moderator, we received additional state revenue from the cherry sheet that we did not appropriate. I left $3,000 out of the appropriations there, in case this article passes, so it wouldn't be in a deficit situation.
Is that the same additional money that was, that's questionable as to whether or not it would go to the schools?
No.
Another question, have we, have we closed the books for last year yet?
To answer the question?
Pardon me?
The answer's no.
So, do we know what we've got? Do we know anything about last year? Do we know anything about last year and whether or not it's prudent to spend, as the Finance Committee says, any amount of money?
To answer the question, if someone chooses?
The answer is twofold. Yes, we do understand our position where we are approximately. We have not closed the books for some reason. Some of them are that some of our year-end balances had pennies that weren't brought over. So even if you have a discrepancy of pennies in municipal finance, you cannot close that book. In the private sector, you'd write those amounts off. So is it prudent without that? I would prefer that we had that all straightened out, but we do have a general idea of where we are.
Thank you.
Is that a good general idea or is that a not-so-good general idea? Can you share that with us?
To answer the question, if you choose?
You know, the, I don't know, I don't know how to answer. I know where we are. We can theoretically afford this. We've got the money set aside. Again, we received additional state aid on the cherry sheet. When the governor set his numbers back in January, we used those numbers. The numbers that were finalized were several hundred thousand dollars more that we were receiving in state aid. That would be, that's where this money's coming from right now. We do believe, my understanding from the Accounting Department, is we do believe that will be certified free cash in the positive direction. So I think that would be your best bet. We don't believe that would be negative certified free cash from the numbers we're looking at now, but I can't give you a number.
Okay, last question. If we approve this tonight and we find out differently, you know, things aren't as good as the way you think they're going to be, or we don't get as much free cash or something like that, can we unapprove this in April?
Yes, you could. There would be a...
To answer the question?
You could, but remember, in April, you've got, what, five, six more months of expenditure? So part of that money would probably be expended at that time.
Does that answer your questions, Mr. Heaney?
Yes, I think so. I guess I support the majority of the Finance Committee in that, you know, we don't know where we are. Some people might be reasonably comfortable, but we don't know where we are financially. And yeah, it's only 3,000 bucks, but realistically, the precedent, I think, is that we don't have any money to spend.
20 seconds, Mr. Heaney.
And to that end, I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
On my right?
Yes, Sandy Slavin, Precinct 3. Has any attempt, no, I'll try again, sorry. Recently, I stopped using a curbside pickup, and I go to the dump stations, and I think they do a great job in attempting to recycle all the items. You've got everything there that you're going to recycle at our recycle center, which I used for years. It's my understanding that some of our carriers, our trash haulers, charge people for recycling. The town I came from, Stowe, said to their carriers, "If you want to continue to do business in town, you're doing recycling free for us." I was wondering, has any attempt been made by the town of Wareham to contract with our haulers to take the recycling effort and do it for free so our residents don't have to come to the recycle center? Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Winslow?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just want to make a couple points. The first is, while I appreciate the sentiments of the Finance Committee, at some point in this town meeting, we're going to be asked to increase the legal services budget by $20,000, increase inspectional services expenses by $12,500, increase the council on aging salary by $22,300. I mean, I could go on. We're talking about $3,000. The Recycling Committee is a service that's provided to this community, and services don't come for free. The other thing I want to say is that while I appreciate the argument that the Finance Committee has made, they're certainly welcome to go to the Recycling Committee and make their suggestions about how they believe the recycling center should be run. You have a very part-time coordinator who's not working hours upon hours. The point of putting more money in this budget is to keep the recycling center open, to keep the coordinator working, and to continue to improve the service that's offered to you, the taxpayers that are paying for it. If we choose to go the route of we don't know what we have and we can't afford anything, then we're going to be forced to vote down all these other things on that principle. And if we do that here tonight, then we're going to be in serious trouble in a matter of months. So I ask you to please support the $3,000 increase out of the $60 million budget to the recycling center. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, Mike Flaherty, Precinct 1. I move the question.
We have a motion before us to move the question. It does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a two-thirds. We now will have before you Article 14. The motion before you is to fund the Recycling Committee by an additional $3,000. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The chair is in doubt. I'm going to take account on this one. All those in favor, please hold up your cards. All those in favor? All those in favor of funding an additional $3,000? Section 1?
Section 1, 27.
Section 1, 27. On the right?
23.
23. In the center?
66.
The center, 66. On my left?
45.
45. 45.
Yes, 45.
All those opposed, please hold your cards and keep them held high until the tellers tell you to put them down. Section 1?
Section 1, 8.
On my right?
15.
15, 15. In the center?
47, 47.
47. On my left?
28.
28, 28. The vote is 161 in the affirmative, 98 in the negative. The motion passes by a majority. Article 17. Article 17 is before us, which is a solar credit purchase agreement. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into alternate energy power purchase and/or net metering credit purchase agreements, including solar energy and related net electricity metering credits, for terms of more than three years on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem is in the best interests of the town, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take all actions necessary to administer and implement such agreement.
Do I have a second? A second to speak to the article. Selectman Holmes?
Madam Moderator, Steve Holmes from Onset. I'd like to ask the body's endurance to give Mr. Rich Kleiman my time on the floor for this particular article.
Thank you. We have a request from Selectman Holmes to allow Mr. Rich Kleiman to speak to the article. Mr. Kleiman is not a registered voter, and Mr. Holmes is asking for courtesy of the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Kleiman, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. And the body, to the body, I would like to introduce to you this evening, Mr. Richard Kleiman. Richard is here tonight to talk to us about solar credit procurement. Richard?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Holmes, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight briefly, just about Article 17, which is a solar credit purchase agreement that we're proposing to the town. We've spent about the last eight, nine months talking with various town officials about this proposal. It was very warmly received with the folks that we spoke with. What we've, I represent Sagestone, which is an international energy developer, but we have offices here in Massachusetts, and we're currently building seven of these large solar projects in different towns and cities in Massachusetts, and in the same type of partnership that we're proposing here. In fact, over half of the cities and towns in Massachusetts are either entering into these types of agreements or have already done so to their great benefit. This is a project that we're projecting would raise revenues for the town of Wareham of approximately $10 million over the course of the project. It's a six-megawatt solar project, which is located in Plymouth, and we have that project now fully permitted. We're going to be in construction in the spring and in operation middle of next year. The state net metering rules allow us to build these solar projects in one town and effectively net meter or send the credits to another town in the same area, and that's what we're proposing here. So this project is not in anyone's backyard. It's in an area of Plymouth that was allowed for this use and has no residential abutters, and therefore, the town felt it was appropriate to approve the project there. So what we're proposing would add a great benefit, we believe, in terms of new revenue to the town of Wareham and allow, you know, up to $500,000 a year in the latter years of the project at least, in new revenue to the town, without any of the sort of burdens that a wind or a solar project built elsewhere might, or in town, might cause. The town is not being asked to finance the project or construct or operate the project, but simply to receive the net metering credits on its bills every month and keep a portion of the value of those credits. And that's how the state rules work for net metering. We're currently building, as I said, seven. Other of these projects are, we have a project underway of a very similar nature in East Bridgewater, which is now in construction, and I certainly invite people to come and take a look at that project as it goes into operation, and with same arrangement with the town of East Bridgewater. So we ask your indulgence tonight respectfully to authorize the Selectmen to discuss this agreement further with us, and I appreciate your time and courtesy this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiman. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, three in favor, zero opposed, and two abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and the recommendations of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted zero favorable, zero against, and seven abstain. The reason for that was the Finance Committee Finance Committee did not feel that we were provided enough information to make a well-informed decision.
Thank you. Anyone care to speak to the article on my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Brenda Exstrom. Could I get through you? My question answered, perhaps from Town Council. I'm not opposed to the solar energy field and buying the credits or whatever. I have concerns, though, that this is written into, ending into alternate energy power purchase, including solar. Are there other ones that would be allowed by this, or could we change that, or would it be prudent for us to change the word "including" to "for" solar energy? I am a proponent of solar energy. I'm just very concerned that this kind of leaves the door open. It's fairly ambiguous as to what other sources, and I think that this body should have a right to know of every source. I understand that the previous speaker, he represents a solar energy company, but this does not have his company's name in it. This is just a very broad thing. So is there anything that we could do?
Can you ask a specific question?
If we could, if we change the word "including" to the word "for" in the fourth line, and I guess that would be it. Would that, would that limit it to only solar, alternative energy?
To answer the question, should you choose, Town Council?
Madam Moderator, three are the previous speaker. The motion, as it's currently before the body, would allow, would authorize the Board of Selectmen, if this were approved, to enter into any power purchase agreement with any alternate source generator, be it solar, wind, water, you name it. So if it was your intention to limit it only to solar, you would have to amend this by limiting it to only solar.
And if I may, just one more through you, Madam Moderator. Would changing the word "for" instead of the word "including," would that suffice legally to do that, or would I have to adjust it in the entering line? Where it says alternate energy power purchase and/or net metering, would I have to change it in there, or could I just say "for" solar energy? Or if I, if, if I may also, I would say, if I, if, just to add to it, to do "for" solar energy, and at the bottom, to implement such agreements relating to solar energy only, could I do it that way?
Sure. That would be within the scope of the article.
And that would, and, well, okay, then I would like to amend it, and I will write it down, but to have it on the fourth line, to change the word "including," to change that to the word "for," F-O-R, and at the bottom, to change it to say, and administer and implement such agreements for solar energy only?
So on the bottom, it would be into?
At the bottom, where it, "to administer and implement such agreements for solar energy only."
So we will have before us an amendment. Mrs. Exstrom's amendment would be to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into alternate energy power purchase
But what we're looking to do is, is to obtain metering credits of energy. The town is going to put up no structures here. The town is going to put up no turbines. The town is going to take up no land. The town is simply going to use our meter, energy usage that we use today, that we've gathered for these companies, and they will produce energy in their solar fields, on their wind farms, or whatever the case may be. In this gentleman's case, it's a solar field. And those metered credits will come back to the town of Wareham, saving money. So I'm not sure what this whole thing about solar energy only is, because if we have an opportunity to take advantage of a wind company that has metered credits available for us to use, we need to do that as well. None of these projects have taken place in the town of Wareham. We're only looking for an authorization to establish purchasing agreements to buy the power. It has nothing to do with the infrastructure, whether it's solar or wind, or coal, or gas, or nuclear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Exstrom, I apologize to you because you did make the amendment and you do have five minutes to speak to your amendment, and I apologize to you for not recognizing that. So if you would like to speak next, to have your five minutes, please.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't think I'll need the whole five minutes, but to the previous speaker, to his concerns, I understand that this is not necessarily built in Wareham, and I understand that we're taking advantage of electricity metering and credits that are done in other places. But I also am a resident of the state of Massachusetts, and I know that the Cape Cod Commission is, has a lot of issues down there with certain alternative energy sources that have been put up or erected as of late that are being dismantled. I don't think that, I don't really want to save two cents on a kilowatt if it's going to mean that I'm wiping out another community's peace and quiet. So I am in favor of solar energy. I, I think that this is a good alternative, and if there are other energy sources that we can take advantage of, I think the Board of Selectmen needs to come back to this body. And I in no way changing this meant to infer that this board was going to do anything not on the up and up. All as I meant is that these things have a way of coming back two, three, five years later when there aren't the same people on the board and someone says, hey, it says we can do it this, this, we might as well do it this way. So I just want it clear that it is the intent, or at least my intent, is that we handle solar energy and as other alternative, any, any other alternative, alternative energy issues come forward, for this body to have a say in it. Thank you.
Gentleman on my left, to speak to the amendment only.
Yes, okay. I would actually...
Could you please state your name?
Benjamin Ellis. I would like to speak towards the amendment to actually have it reversed. There are specific reasons for this. Is this any better? Okay. Sorry, I'm a bit tall. We need renewable energy. This is a common fact. We cannot, as a state, as a nation, we cannot rely on coal. We cannot rely on coal for many reasons. It is polluting. And we cannot rely on nuclear energy. It's producing too much nuclear waste. I'm sorry. The way to do this is to utilize the best we can and help promote the use of renewable energy sources such as wind and solar energy. Now, they're not asking, and this, Article 17 is not asking, to build these in the town, but more than anything, it's helping to support the production of this renewable energy in the surrounding towns. And by only limiting it to solar energy, we're really taking out the legs of wind energy, which is actually more efficient and less, has less byproducts than production of solar panels. And that's really, I think, we should not limit ourselves to solar energy only. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right?
Jackson Gelman. I have a question. If we do change this amendment, does that not take away the wind out of the sails out of Article 16? I mean, we're here to also vote on that. If we change the wording of this, doesn't that negate the six, Article 16? And we're gonna?
No.
No, it doesn't. Well, I do agree that we should not be tying our hands in saying only. I don't understand what the rationale is behind it. I think we should keep all our options open.
Thank you. On my left, to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Bill Heaney, Precinct One. I don't like the idea of limiting this. You know, first of all, I don't want a wind tower near my house, but if somebody else does, sure, I'll buy their energy. Why would we want to limit this? If, if other folks want to have whatever sources of energy in their town, whether that be water or wind or solar or anything, I don't think we should be limited to accepting metering credits. I think that we should be open to accepting the credits from whatever source they come from. I intend to support the article, excuse me, defeat the motion and then, the amendment, and then support the article.
Thank you. On my right?
I think lost among this discussion is the, the degree to which, I'm sorry, Jeff Swett from Mises Road, District One, Precinct One. Lost among the issues is the fact that I'm assuming that this businessman, and I applaud him for his business, is going to expect a long-term contract from the town to purchase this, these, this energy. So what we're really doing, in addition to making an environmental decision, we're making a financial decision, meaning that we're guaranteeing that we'll purchase a certain amount of energy at a certain price, and that price could be more or less than the prevailing rate. So we're really authorizing the Board of Selectmen to make a, a long-term financial decision with respect to energy for the town, and I just would like the Board of Selectmen to confirm that I'm correct in my assumption.
To answer the question?
Madam Moderator, my understanding, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but the Board of Selectmen would negotiate a contract, but any such contract would have to come back before this body. Am I, no? Isn't that what Mr. Holmes just said?
Madam Moderator, may I answer Mr. Swett's question?
To answer the question?
The, the actual, and, and when this amendment is done, I can answer your question better, Jeff, but the idea of the matter is, is that this agreement, the reason it's here today is because it's, it's over three years, and Town Council can actually address this better than me, but it's over a three-year contract. We're talking about a 20-year contract, and therefore, it has to come to the town meeting before even the town administrator can sign the agreement. The agreement would be between the town administrator and an outside agency, as Board of Selectmen do not sign contracts. So as the chief procurement officer, the person who signs the agreement would actually end up being the town administrator. Mr. Bowen, is that correct? Through you, Madam Moderator.
To answer the question, if he so chooses?
Madam Moderator, three of the previous speakers. In fact, the reason why it is in front of town meeting is the duration of the contract, something of 20 years, does require town meeting approval.
Set answer your question, Mr. Swett?
Well, what I think I heard was, in fact, we're authorizing the Board of Selectmen or the chief procurement officer, or both, to make a long-term bet on the cost of energy. And that has significant implications, and I'll have to think about that as I'm deciding how to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right to speak to the amendment?
Malcolm Vane, Precinct Four. One of the previous speakers in trying to convince me, as a member of the audience, to vote down this, this amendment, actually convinced me to vote for it when he said that any other form of energy, including coal. There are a lot of people who subscribe to the fantasy that there's such a thing as clean coal, and that's an alternative form of, form of energy that's good for the environment. There's no way I would vote for any kind of, any kind of action here that would include, include, or possibly in the future, include coal. Presently, I would just soon vote for this, and if in the future we have to change it to include wind energy, then that's fine with me. But I don't, I urge people not to vote for it as being wide open so they could include such things as coal energy.
Thank you. Selectman Begley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I, too, am going to support this amendment. This, my friends, could very well be a 20-year agreement. We already know that we have neighboring communities, it's in the news about what's going on with wind power, and whether you agree with it or not, this is, this body's opportunity to be specific about what you want in this contract. Right now, I personally feel that this is pretty much wide open, that the Board of Selectmen can go in and we can negotiate, and then it goes, you know, with these various companies, it goes to the town administrator, who essentially signs the contract. But do you really want something that's as open-ended as, as this article? So the thing is that it doesn't close the door to other opportunities. The Article 16 shows us that, and we have April, we have two town meetings that go on for several days that contain a number of articles. So if there's something else that comes up in the short term, we can vote on that again. As, as we've already heard, these solar fields aren't even under construction yet. But I would urge you to support the amendment, because having a broad-spectrum article, we have already had experience with that, haven't we? It's come again and again, or we try to undo something. So I urge you to support the amendment.
Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, actually, I believe this other gentleman was up before me.
Mr. Kleiman spoke to the article as a proponent. He can answer any specific questions.
Okay, thank you.
If someone had a specific question.
No, I just moved, I just moved the question.
Well, we don't have anyone else standing to answer the question, Mr. Kleiman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I think there was a, sorry, there was a question earlier that suggested that the town would be taking a bet on electricity. In fact, that's not the case. The, the town would be getting a percentage of whatever the prevailing net metering rate is at this, at whatever time that, that the electricity is sent into the grid. So the way the state rules work, the, the town would get a percentage of that, and then over time, that, that amount typically goes up as the electric rates go up, and they have gone up on average two and a half to three percent a year over the past 10 years. The town would get an increase in how much revenue comes in. So that's the way it works, and if, if, if the electric rates went down a little bit, the town would still get a percentage of that. It wouldn't be losing money. It would just be getting whatever the, their percentage of the prevailing rate is. So I just wanted to clarify that for you, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We have a motion before us to move the question. There is no other speaker standing, but I will take a vote on the motion to move the question, which requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? We now have, it passes by a majority, by two-thirds. We now have before us the amendment on Article 17, which is, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into alternate energy power purchase and/or net metering credit purchase agreements for solar energy and related net energy metering credits for terms of not more than three years on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem in the best interest of the town and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take all actions necessary to administer and implement such agreements for solar energy only. This requires a majority vote. Point of order? For more than three years. For terms? For terms of not more than three years. Of more than three years. What's before you on the screen? I apologize. It's a little hard to read from the side here. We have the article before us that requires a majority vote. This is the amendment to Article 17 as proposed. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The amendment fails. We now have before us the original article, Article 17, which would be including solar energy and related net electricity metering credits and would end at the Board of Selectmen to take all actions necessary to administer and implement such agreements. To speak to the article, Mr. McDonald?
I have some concerns. My main concern is that, as part of the Finance Committee, we saw no one that came before us, gave us any kind of presentation, and we're looking at three different forms of either tax credits or building a solar field. And there's a financial impact here, and I'm not sure what it is, because each, each one of the articles addresses another type of metering credit. So now you've got two, and now you have one, and I believe the one at the sewer treatment plant is a major concern, because that is a huge power source. So if we're putting in our own solar field, we are already reducing the amount of electricity that we're using. Now you have two other people, and we're going to enter into agreements, and it gets confusing to me, there's only so much you can do, and I don't know that we can spread it three different ways and make money out of this or reduce our expense out of this. I don't think that it was properly thought through financially. We never saw anybody, and I'm just real concerned that you have three different articles addressing the same issue, and they interact and may be a negative impact.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? Gentleman on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dave Walton, District Three. I just want to explain to people who perhaps don't understand exactly how this, this whole system works. I've got an electric bill in front of me, just to give a, for instance. The bottom line, all the fine print and the different distribution, charge, transition, transmission, renewable, all of that is irrelevant. The bottom line is, what do you write a check for? That's your bill. And the amount of electricity used. Divide one by the other, and that gives you your cost per kilowatt hour of electricity. Residential people in Wareham right now are paying between 18 and a half and 19 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. That's what you're paying right now, all of you people, residential. I come from a town that buys bulk electricity and has its own electric light department. Right now, in my hometown, people, residential people are paying about 11 cents. That adds up to a lot of money, a difference. Now, this is not quite doing that, but this is buying bulk and reducing the cost. I am only interested in what the bottom line is going to be. When I get my monthly bill... or reduce our expense out of this. I don't think that it was properly thought through financially. We never saw anybody and I'm just real concerned that you have three different articles addressing the same issue and they interact and may be a negative impact.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? Gentlemen on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dave Walton, district three. I just want to explain to people who perhaps don't understand exactly how this, this whole system works. I've got an electric bill in front of me just to give a, for instance, the bottom line, all the fine print and the different distribution, charge, transition, transmission, renewable, all of that is irrelevant. The bottom line is what do you write a check for? That's your bill. And the amount of electricity used, divide one by the other and that gives you your cost per kilowatt hour of electricity. Residential people in Wareham right now are paying between eighteen and a half and nineteen and a half cents per kilowatt hour. That's what you're paying right now, all of you people, residential. I come from a town that buys bulk electricity and has its own electric light department. Right now in my hometown, people, residential people are paying about eleven cents. That adds up to a lot of money, a difference. Now, this is not quite doing that, but this is buying bulk and reducing the cost. I am only interested in what the bottom line is going to be. When I get my monthly bill, is it going to be a better bill, the same and stay the same for a longer period or is it going to climb slower or whatever? That's the bottom line. All this other is irrelevant to me. It's what the cost is going to be.
Thank you. Mr. Camerano?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I have a question for the gentleman, if he could answer it through you from the company. On the worksheet that he gave us, it says in 25 years that the town would receive $6,177,000. And how etched in stone is that number that the town would receive? And if the town receives that much, will the electric bills for the residents actually have an opportunity to go higher or lower? I don't want the town to make money at my expense.
To answer the question only, Mr. Kleiman?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you for the question. The, I think the first part of the question I mentioned in my earlier comments, which was over the course of the contract, which we initially would be a 20 to 25-year contract with opportunities for the town to extend it if it wanted to, that the town could, could get new revenue as much as $10 million from that contract. And that, that's money coming into the town's municipal electric bills and basically a reduction in what it has to pay out to NSTAR on those bills. So basically, it's a savings, but it's effectively money the town would not have to pay and that savings could be applied to either tax reduction or other, you know, projects or costs the town must bear. So it is real revenue, it's a savings, but it's real revenue and it comes into the town on its municipal electric bills each month. And I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Donahue, did that answer your question, Mr. Camerano?
Yes and no. You said that then, it actually then is not a direct revenue, it's just a savings on the town's electric bill. Am I correct?
Can you, can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. So then this really isn't a direct revenue to the town, it's just a saving on the town's electric bill. Am I correct?
To answer the question only?
Through you, Madam Moderator. This is, it comes in the form of dollar-denominated net metering credits. So they are dollars coming into the town's electric bills as a credit so that the town does not have to pay that money out. And in fact, what would happen over time normally where we've worked with other towns on these issues, this types of project, the town effectively lowers its authorization for, for electric annually so that it is in fact a savings, it is in fact a form of new revenue. It's just in the form of net metering credits which are dollar-denominated. It's, I think it's just a different way of talking about the same thing.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It seems to me and it appears the town council answered that what we're being asked to vote on is to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into and negotiate contracts, that those contracts would then have to be brought forth before town meeting and we would have time to see the specifics?
No.
No. They would get the power here if we give them this.
Right. We are giving them, we are authorizing the board of selectmen to enter into alternate energy power purchase or net metering purchase agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further to be said on the article? Mr. Holmes?
Madam Moderator, Steve Holmes, on set. To my good friend on the finance committee and he knows I mean that. Ladies and gentlemen, what we're talking about here is real simple stuff. This isn't rocket science. Currently, and one of the reasons I thanked Mr. Kudish earlier was because before any of this was ever looked at, Mr. Kudish actually collected your town's electric bills for both the school department and the town. This isn't anything new. It's been around for quite a while in this town. We have not taken advantage of it. And basically, rather than spend in $1,000 for electric, we're going to spend, say, $600. That's $400 we don't have to spend. Some financial wizards could argue that that's not revenue. Well, absolutely it is if you're a supply chain guy because it's a reduction in expense. We're not going to spend that $400. So you can use that $400 somewhere else. I see my friend is smiling. I know what you're thinking. But, but listen, this is pretty simple stuff. It's, it's an opportunity for us not to have to spend a lot of money. There's no hocus pocus here. It's pretty simple. We're spending all this money on electricity now and we have an opportunity to reduce that. I don't believe that Mr. Ritchie, I used the term coal before and nuclear, but I was just giving you an example. I don't believe he's into coal plants. So, I mean, this is pretty simple stuff.
20 seconds, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We're looking, trying to save money for this town so that we can use that money where we need it. We don't need it in electricity if we can enter into some of these agreements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Selectman Bagley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to clarify, because I heard, I think I heard one of the previous speakers talking about their own electric bill and, and no one here, we're not going to be a municipal electric company. No one here is going to see their personal electric bills decreasing. This is for the municipality and the electric bills here are well above $100,000. I mean, they're huge. So I think that any way that we can save certainly has merit. So if we have a bill for $100,000 and we can spend $600,000, absolutely. That $400,000 could certainly take a bite out of the, the future budgets that we have coming up that are going to be significantly higher than what we have for revenue, frankly. However, my one concern with this article, I'm all for saving money, no question, I'm all, I'm all for alternative energy, is that it is, the language of it is extremely broad. So if that's what you want and you want the board of selectmen to negotiate contracts for pretty much any source of power, because there was a previous speaker that expressed some concern that it could be not solar and not wind and not alternative form of, of energy, then by all means, vote for this article. But if you prefer to have very specific language in this as this is your only opportunity to put what you want in this for the board of selectmen to continue with these negotiations.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please keep in mind with your comments that the article before us is to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into an agreement. So your argument should be, do you want to allow them to enter into an agreement or do you not want to allow them to enter an agreement? On my right, Mr. McDonald, I believe you just have a few minutes left.
I appreciate it. And before we agree on whether to enter into an agreement, I'd like to know what it's going to bring us. I guess I'll ask the question directly then because one of us is an accountant, one is a salesman. Would, if article 18, which is a solar field at the waste treatment plant passes, what effect does this have to the, and what did you call it, revenue? It's a cost reduction. But whatever it is, what effect does that have to the amount of money we can realize through this net metering credit? Answer from the salesman?
To answer the question only?
The town is allowed to utilize about 10 megawatts in our current state. The, Mr. Campina's sitting over there, I think Mr. Campina's solar project is, is about three. Mr. Campina, a nod? Five? Oh, 1.6 utilizing his solar field that he's requesting. Sage was, Rich, three? Six. There you go. So there's 1.5 from the wastewater treatment initiative, there's six from Sage and I believe we have another group here from, I believe it's first generation where we could, we could come up with him. We can't go over 10. So we are limited as a town to utilize 10 megawatts. So even with these three projects, it looks like we, we still may have some ability to get more, but we'd pretty much tap it out with two and a half of these.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, sir?
To answer the question. Thank you. On my right?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I urge the body to vote against this article. If the finance committee voted 007 and the previous member of the finance committee spoke about how they didn't get any presentations or whatever, I watch the selectmen's meetings on a regular basis. I can remember the solar people coming and I believe twice and that this was not discussed. I, the board of selectmen, I'd like, I mean, how are they going to administer, I, I get that it's not rocket science to do a contract, but to do one that's unfavorable, that's financially beneficial to the town, if we vote it down, the arguments can be made, the finance committee can be brought in on it and can give us if in fact this would be advantageous to the town. Thank you.
Selectman Slaven?
Just to reiterate again, we're allowed to buy, the unit as total is 10. This is a program that's available so the federal government allows. I'll do my best, sorry. The federal government allows basically the program, it's all subsidized, that's why the rates are there. We're allowed to buy up to the number is 10. This program might be here for another six months, might be there for a year. This is an alternate energy program. The idea of coal burning, et cetera, that's what we're doing now when we buy our energy everywhere right now. Our local companies that we're dealing with are burning coal. This is an alternate energy. We are guaranteeing ourselves from the town side a lower cost overall. That lower cost can go to the school, go to the police, go anywhere we need it. We know we're going to have shortfalls in the next year and especially in 2015. Any way that we can legitimately save dollars is what we need to do in order to keep this town whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on article 17, seeing no one standing? I now will come, call for a vote on article 17, which is the solar credit purchase agreement to authorize the board of selectmen to enter into alternate energy power purchase and/or net metering credit purchase agreements. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Article 11 is now before you to transfer harbors and beaches, a transfer within the harbors and beaches maintenance account. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer $30,000 from the waterways improvement and maintenance to the harbors and beaches maintenance account.
May I have a second? Is there anything to be said on article 11? No? No one rising to, I see people moving, is anyone rising to speak to article 11? I see no one at the microphone. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the board of selectmen voted favorable action for zero abstention, zero nays and one abstention.
May I have the report of the finance committee?
The finance committee voted three up, three down and two abstention.
Okay. Is there anything to be said on article 11? Seeing no one at the microphone, I now will call for vote on article 11. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Article 26 is to repeal the provisions of the special acts of 1994. May I have a motion from the finance committee?
I move that the town, I move that the town vote to petition the legislature to repeal the provisions of chapter 152 of the special acts of 1994 entitled, "An Act Relative to the Regulation of Dogs in the Town of Wareham and to Restore Animal Control Hearing Powers as Provided for by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157 and any other applicable laws."
Do I have a second? Have a second to speak to the article? Selectman Tittlebaum?
Yes, Madam Moderator, through you to the body. This article was brought forward at the request of the dog bylaw study committee during the course of our meetings and in conversations with our animal control officer who was a member of that body, which as you may recall was established last spring by the town meeting body to investigate and possibly recommend changes to our dog bylaws. What we discovered was that it was difficult for the animal control officer to get hearings on dangerous dogs to, through the police department. And this is not to be taken as any criticism of the police department, but rather simply an acknowledgement that they don't have the time to deal with it. They are down currently a superior officer. I think we all have looked in the newspapers and seen that we've had a lot of violent crime that has taken up their time. And so what we're looking to do here is to reverse a vote that this body took back in 1994 that asked the state legislature to authorize a whole rule petition or a special act rather, to vest the powers to hold hearings on dangerous dogs with the police. General laws, chapter 140, as it's currently written, allows for a number of different setups. The most liberal one, the one that allows the most flexibility is to revert to the way it's worded in general laws, chapter 140, where the board of selectmen or their designees, and that's the key language here, it doesn't necessarily have to be the board of selectmen. The selectmen could go ahead and appoint a special board to hear these things if we want. But what we're looking for is the flexibility to get these hearings going, quite frankly. The police simply don't have the time to do it. So that was the, the reason for this, this, this motion and that's why we're requesting that you vote in favor of it.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen, please?
The, the board of selectmen voted favorable action, two for, zero nays, three abstentions.
May I have the vote of the, the vote and recommendation of the finance committee? Yeah, I'm sorry. Mrs. Bagley, could you repeat that?
Favorable action, two were in favor, zero against and three abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee voted one in favor, four opposed, two abstentions.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on article 26? Seeing no one at the microphone, I now will call for a vote on article 26, which is to petition the legislature to repeal the provisions of chapter 152 of the special acts of 1994. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Article number three. Just a minute, one, just one minute. Article number three is to fund the capital plan. When we have articles that are financially contingent upon one another and it's out of necessity that we take another article ahead of it, before we can act on article number three, we do need to act on article number two. Is that your request? Thank you. So we will go to article number two, which is to accept the capital plan. I am going to have a motion
Madam Moderator?
From the finance committee for article number two.
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the fiscal year 2013 capital plan as listed. IT equipment, 25,000, three vehicles, border health, municipal maintenance, accessory conservation, 47,500, school busing, 55,000, school roof repair, 110,000, library windows and doors repair, 47,500, defibrillators for the police, 40,000 and town hall security upgrades, 25,000 for a total of $350,000.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Madam Moderator, do you plan on dividing this question? Madam Moderator, do you plan on dividing this question?
I do. I was going to get to that after the proponents spoke to the article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article is to fi, is for the FY 2013 capital plan. You'll see the items that they just spoke about on there. What I'll ask is if there's any questions about them, such as the IT, I'll ask that our Director of IT step up to it. To give you a brief background, some of the items, such as the vehicles, right now, the vehicles that we have for our employees.
Mr. Sullivan, would you like to wait? And it's my intention as the moderator to take these line item by line item. Would you like to explain them as we take them item by item?
That'd be better. Thank you.
That'd be better for you. Ladies and gentlemen, because this is a capital plan, I am going to institute the moderator's prerogative to take these line item by line item so that we can vote on these individually and speak to them individually. So the first one I will take up will be the very first one, IT equipment. So if you would like to speak to that.
I would ask that Mr. Underhill speak to, thank you.
Matthew Underhill, Director of IT. The IT equipment is made up of three requests. First request is, we have three of our phone systems in town. The modulators that control them are no longer supported by the manufacturer. We will not need to replace the phone systems themselves, but just the modules. That's going to be about $9,000 in those three phone systems. That would be the library, the sewer department, and the town hall. The next item is a, is a plotter, a scanner. Our existing plotter that we have is, is over 10 years old. It is, it's been repaired numerous times. It is no longer repairable. The cost to repair it is more than it's worth. That would be item number two. And then we're looking at replacing five computers for department heads that utilize our GIS system. That would be the town planner, the town conservation agent, the assessor, the treasurer-collector's computer. Those computers would be replaced, you know, because the existing computers that they're all using now are over 13 years old, and those computers cannot run the GIS system itself.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take these one by one, and what I'm asking you to vote on is whether or not you want to keep this line item in the capital plan. We are not voting on the dollar amount. We are just voting whether or not to keep it in the capital plan. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. We will keep the IT equipment in the capital plan. On to line item number two.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Line item number two is for vehicles. You'll see that there are three vehicles in total for $46,000. The idea of that is roughly $15,000 per vehicle. It's not to purchase brand-new BMWs or anything like that. They would be used vehicles. And the thought process behind there is if you look out in our parking lot, you'll see right now two Ford Expeditions, one old Crown Victoria. They're inefficient for our needs. They have several hundred thousand miles on them. I don't know the exact gas mileage of an Expedition. I'm sure someone can tell me that, but you're probably looking in the teens if you're lucky. I'd like to get us more fuel-efficient vehicles, vehicles that are working for our employees. And one of the other things that we need to keep in mind, if our employees use their own personal vehicles, such as right now our municipal maintenance director is doing, first, we have to pay the mileage on there. Second, they're not covered for the initial liability on there, even if they're on our time and get into an accident. So I'd rather have our employees covered for that as well while they're working for us. Thank you.
Thank you. To speak to line item number two, as far as keeping it in the plan or not keeping it in the plan, on my right?
Sandy Slavin, Precinct 3. You said keeping it, but I heard two different amounts. I know we're not voting on the amount, but can I get a clarification on whether it's 46 or 47.5?
It should be.
Should be 46. I believe in, under Article 3.
Yeah, it should. In the warrant, it had been, it had been 47.5, but then that one, let me just see. It is correct, 47.5 is the correct amount on there because another line had been reduced by 1,500. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so the vote will now come on line item number two, to keep the three vehicles in the capital plan. It requires majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by a majority. It will stay in the capital plan. Line number three.
Line number three was to fund for $55,000 school transportation and/or repair needs on there. One of the things that the Transportation Action Committee is looking at is a new program that can rehab buses to give them an extra approximately, what, 10, 10 years of life on there? I believe, and the cost of that is roughly $30,000 per vehicle. This also would give the school the opportunity, or us the opportunity to purchase a vehicle for the school in the amount of $55,000, so that would be new or used. Thank you.
Is there anything to be said on this line item, seeing no one standing? The vote will now come on whether or not to keep this in the capital plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. It will stay in the plan. Line item number four, school roof repair.
Line item number four is to repair slash replace the roof of the high school gymnasium. And I think you've already seen the presentation today. I think we're all aware that if we allow, if you think about your own homes, if you let the roof leak, the damage continues even more, whether it's to your floors and such. At some point, you need to just repair that and make sure that you're not costing more, more costly errors and leakages in the future. Thank you.
Anything to be said on whether or not to keep the school roof repair in the line item of the capital plan? On my right, Mr. Heath?
Madam Moderator, Frank Heath of Finance Committee, and also from Capital Planning. What we seem to overlook, or have overlooked for a number of years, is that the high school is actually a town building. And our own charter states that any type of capital improvement, renovation or repair made to the building in excess of $50,000 is the responsibility of the town, not the individual department. That applies also to the next item, which is the library as well. Just as we would not ask the library to put this money in their budget, we should not be asking the school to put it in their budget. They are responsible for the maintenance of the building. On their own budget, they're responsible for the supervision of the building. However, they're not responsible for the capital items. And we've seen that several times come to us, with things such as, you know, we looked at whether or not we wanted a new elementary school, we looked at the renovation of the middle school, et cetera. This is in the same category. I know we have a history on this, but this is the right way to approach it. That's why the Capital Planning Committee approached it this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. The vote now will come on whether or not to keep the school roof repair in the capital plan. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. It stays in the plan. Ladies and gentlemen, the next line item is the library windows and door repairs.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm going to actually pick on Denise, our Director of the Library, if she doesn't mind.
Denise Maderas, Library Director. That 47.5 for windows and doors for the library includes replacing and resurfacing two doors, replacing six windows and their sills with flashing to stop the rotting around the windows, replacing corner trim and soffits and sills on all the triangular windows, including flashing, and refri, repairing the front columns. It also includes doing some painting of barrier, excuse me, bare areas and caulking and puttying, and also some paint, which is badly needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on the library windows and door repairs as to keeping it in the capital plan or not? I see no one standing, therefore I will call for the vote on the line item, library windows and door repairs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Next line item is defibrillators.
Madam Moderator, this is the, for police defibrillators, we had put 40,000 together. The last time we had this item up, the price per unit was, I believe, at roughly $2,000. So the estimate was at 20 units. If there's any questions, I would ask the police chief to stand up, speak to it. Thank you.
Gentlemen, on my right?
Ken Levitt, Precinct 1. I'm looking at my documents here, and there's an Article 10 which talks about defibrillators. And I would like somebody to try to explain what the relationship or non-relationship is between Article 10 and this item. Thank you.
Okay, this item under Article 3 in the capital plan is for defibrillators for the police department. Article 10 is for defibrillators for the EMS department. And the EMS defibrillators are totally different from the defibrillators that the police department is asking for. There's nothing further, on my right?
Sandy Slavin, Precinct 3. Are we asking for 20 units or $40,000?
To answer the question?
The estimate that I have for the units is at 2,000 per, which would equal 40,000. Now, I know that that's from about two years ago, so if you're getting a better price on there, I would be happy to know about it, on there, whether it's going to be better.
Are we voting, are we going to vote on 20 units? Or are we going to be voting on 40,000?
We're voting on the total dollar amount, Mrs. Slavin, to 40,000. Whatever they can afford for 40,000.
So they could get 40 units. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on the line item? If not, I will call, on my left?
I have a question. I'm wondering why.
Could you state your name?
My name is Marilyn Jewedin, and I'm from Cipican Road in Cremisette Park. I'm wondering why we need 20 units. It's my understanding that the first respondents, there would be eight cars on the road and with four backups. I could be wrong, the police chief can correct me. But I don't understand why we need 20 units where, when probably 10 of them will be sitting in the cars or not being used. It seems to me that 10 units, you, the policeman would not leave, he would take the defibrillator with him if he was in the car that was going to be responding, just as he would his gun, his badge, and his mace. I think it's overkill to order 20 units. I think 10 units at 21.5 would be more than sufficient.
To answer the question only, please. Chief Stanley?
Yes, I think the best answer to that question is Patricia Ciuffolo from Wednesday, September 26th, whose life was saved by defibrillators. The problem is this, we have X number of vehicles. We have a total of, we have a total of 32 total vehicles in the police department. A lot of those vehicles are unmarked vehicles as well. And those unmarked vehicles should all have defibrillators in them also. We are all trained to use defibrillators. The problem is this, when police officers happen to be on patrol, whether in a marked unit or an unmarked unit, when that call comes in, a couple of minutes means life or death. And if you don't have that defibrillator with you, the ambulance has to come from wherever they are to get to us. We happen, we could be parked right in front of the house when you make that phone call. So those first couple of minutes are critical. And that's why we're looking for that many units. We actually need 32 units or more, because all cars should have them, marked, unmarked, in vehicles that we have in the stock.
Thank you. Did that answer your question?
Well, I have one more. When a 911 call comes in for a heart attack or whatever, not only does the police respond, but the ambulance responds, and they have a little bit higher tech. I know that these, the ones we have now, don't coincide with the ones they have, and that's why we need new ones. But if the fire department, who also have defibrillators, are responding, it's conceivable that three defibrillators could be on the job responding to that unit. That's why I, to that emergency. I don't want to not save anyone's life, but I, what I want to do is be cost-effective.
So do, just a minute, Chief Stanley. Do you have a specific question for Chief Stanley?
Well, the specific question is, on the 911 call, does the ambulance come, and the police, and the fire department?
All 911 calls are received at the Wareham Police Department. The dispatchers who answer the phone are more than just 911 receivers, they're also emergency medical dispatch-trained at the highest level. Those dispatchers walking through the situation while emergency vehicles responding. Case in point.
Just to answer, answer the question.
Case in, I am, Madam Moderator.
Her question was, who responds?
There could be three defibrillators at the scene. The timeframe is what, is what the most important thing is. This last call, police vehicles, three of them, on the scene within three minutes. The ambulance, due to other calls and situations, not on the scene for 11 minutes. That person would not have survived.
On my right?
Andrea Smith, Precinct 5. And I just want to say, if I have a heart attack in West Wareham, or my husband has a heart attack in West Wareham, I want the first vehicle that's there to be able to make an attempt to save our life. I don't want to have to wait for the third vehicle when I have maybe two minutes, or my husband has two minutes. This is a matter of life and death. And I can't believe that people are questioning whether somebody should have immediate attention if they're having a heart attack, or let's take a chance that the third vehicle that arrives 10 minutes after the heart attack can still help them. Please include this in the capital plan.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please, no applause. On my left?
Donna Ashley, Precinct 6. I, I just am sitting here thinking, we've had this discussion before at town meeting. A lot of us in town, myself included, are not getting any younger, believe me. And I have to agree with Ms. Smith. I, I don't want to have to worry about who's going to come if I need help. And I, really, it amazes me that we're back to this again. We have a great police department, they're doing a great job, let's support them with their defibrillators.
Gentlemen, on my right?
Thank you, Mike Flaherty, Precinct 1. I too want to echo what Mrs. Smith said and agree wholeheartedly, and I, I support the defibrillators 120 percent. I commend the leadership of this town, the town administrator, the chief of police, the capital planning board. These are tough decisions, and they're easy and they're tough. I mean, it's a no-brainer, but, you know, finding the money is always hard. But this is money definitely well-spent. I urge you to support this.
Thank you. On my left?
Kara Pillsbury. I would just like to say that I also support this. Excuse me, I have laryngitis. But I'll tell you that it's always the police that get to the call first. It's not the ambulance, it's not the fire department. If you sit and think about that, it's precious time. You don't want to wait an extra three or four minutes for the ambulance to get there. Thank you.
On my right?
Dorothy Heath, Precinct 2. Madam Moderator, to you, to Chief, through you to Chief Stanley, how many cars are on the road at any one time for the police department, including unmarked?
To answer the question, if he so chooses.
This, this could be any number of cars. This could be with all detectives on, with administrative staff on, with traffic cars on, it could be a dozen cars on the street at one, at any particular time. at one, at any particular time. Remember, those cars are traveling back and forth on any number of assignments. We could have more than that on the road at any particular time. It's those golden couple of minutes to get to somebody. This, this discussion's, after thirty-seven years, and I'm sure that it'll bring some cheersome from people.
To answer the question.
I'm answering it. I can't believe this discussion's even taking place.
Your point's well taken. Yeah, just, hold on. Gentlemen, on my left.
Tony Scasiotti, precinct one. I agree that we need defibrillators in the police cars, but I've made suggestions to the police department, and they've gone unanswered, that when you purchase your new cars, you should request that defibrillators be in them. That's, that can be done when you purchase your cars, and you should be doing that. So I think maybe we should get the defibrillators now, and from here on, when you get a new set of cars, start asking for defibrillators in them from the places that you purchased them or leased them, because that can be done. So I would suggest that we, we begin doing that from now on.
Thank you. Gentlemen, on my right.
Blake Gilmar, Maple Springs Road. I'm a state trooper. I have a defibrillator, my cruiser. I have used it and it's been effective. You have people that are in this town that work in the police department that have cruisers on details. They have them while they're working. Some of these people take the cars home with them. So that means that defibrillator could be anywhere in the town at any time. And if the chief so chooses, he could even have it in the center of onset at his building so that his bike patrols could get it. I think we need more. Twenty isn't enough. So the thing is, if you really think you're being dollar-wise on this, you're not. Because I've also been in a situation where I've done CPR on somebody for an hour and didn't get a defibrillator up in time, and we lost them because of it. So I think that you ought to really think about this, whether you want to, you, you want your department to have these things and have them readily available. And with all the cruisers could be out at one time, depending on the events you have in this town, every one of those vehicles should have a defibrillator in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Bagley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, there's been some great suggestions here. However, not all defibrillators can be, are interchangeable. The pads, I can tell you this from experience, different machines have different connections for the pads. So it's not quite as simple as saying, you know, get some here, get some there. And there's already a plan in place, I hope, and I'm certain that there is, there's a plan in place that we're not going to replace all of them all at the same time, because then they'd all be outmoded at the same time. But this body didn't have much of a discussion about spending almost the same amount of money on a building. We're talking about human life here, people. I'm a nurse. I've done CPR, I've used defibrillator, I've taught people how to use them, and they do save lives. And the window of opportunity is very short. Oh, you might get somebody back after ten or twelve or fifteen minutes, but they may not want to be alive with the condition that they are going to be in. AEDs save lives. So if you're going to vote to replace some wood damage and windows in the library, how can we be having this discussion about a human being's life?
Thank you. Please hold your applause, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Please. Gentlemen, on my right.
Madam Moderator, Chris Sylvia, precinct one. I'd like to move the question on this one item only.
Thank you. We have a motion before us to move the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question on the line item for defibrillators only, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. I now will take a vote on whether or not to keep the defibrillators for the police department in the capital plan. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes by a majority. Our last line item is the town hall security upgrade. Do you speak to the-
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The final one here is the town hall security upgrades at twenty-five thousand. The, the upgrades would include, I'm having a hard time, I'm trying not to say what's wrong with our security with telling you what's, with what's going on here. It is to update it and we have, we have important information in there as well as expensive gear, so I'd like to make sure that it's protected. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have before us our last line item in the capital plan, and the, the question before you is whether or not to keep in the town hall security upgrades. Seeing no one to speak to this line item, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, all of these items that you have voted on, you have voted to keep in the capital plan. So this article we have completed-
Point of information, please.
State your point.
What was the vote of the selectmen?
I'm sorry-
Martha Stern.
Yes.
Precinct three. What is the, what was the vote from the selectmen?
On the second-
On this, this, all these capital. You have a finance committee-
We have voted affirmatively on all of them to keep them in the plan.
No, no, I'm sorry. Down below it says the recommendation for the finance-
Of the board?
What is the recommendation for the selectmen, please?
We have the vote of the board of selectmen.
Oh, abstained, okay. The board of selectmen voted favorable action four, in favor, zero opposed, and one abstained.
Thank you.
And the vote of the finance committee, I'm sorry, I did miss that when we started, and I apologize.
The vote of the finance committee was four in favor, one against, and, sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, wrong one. Number three was seven-four and one against, no abstentions. Thank you, Marilyn.
And again, I apologize, that was my fault for missing that. I did miss it. It was the vote of the finance committee, and the vote of the finance committee was four, one, three. Okay, so we have voted all of these line items, each one of them singularly by a majority vote, so they are all in the capital plan. Now we will go to article number three, which is to fund the capital plan. So this is where we decide to pay for them. May I have a motion on article three to fund the capital plan?
Madam Moderator, move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to fund the fiscal year 2013 capital plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. We now need to fund what we've approved, and in our capacity, the best, best way to do that would be to borrow. Right now with the state house note program, the interest rate would be at two and a half percent. So the idea is to borrow for five years the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars at two and a half percent. The total principal and interest payments would be approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the board of selectmen voted favorable action four in favor, zero opposed, and one abstained.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
Finance vote was seven for favorable action, one against, no abstentions.
Thank you. To speak to the article, gentleman on my right.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Capital planning also has to make a recommendation on this as well.
Okay.
And the, because they recommend the type of financing, and we fully agree with the town administrator, the best method would be to borrow.
Yeah, I don't think they could quite hear you, Frank. Can you hold the microphone up and speak slowly into the microphone?
The capital planning committee recommends the type of financing as well to the town administrator, and we agree fully with him that this is the appropriate method to finance these purchases.
Thank you. To speak to article three, gentleman on my right.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Cronin, charge, Pond Road. Just one question as I was sitting there going through the line items. We went over the high school gym roof replacement in the book. It says roof replacement, one-hundred-and-ten-thousand, and I'm all for it. But I thought I read that it said repair. The old eyes don't know what they used to be, but it said school roof repair, I, I think. My question, Madam Moderator, is when, when you were talking earlier, you said we weren't discussing the money until after. That's why I waited till after. I hope to God we're replacing it and not repairing it. There's a big difference in your warranties, and I, and I can only tell you that after thirty years, rubber roofs, hundreds of them I've done. Replace it, don't repair it. That's my two cents to you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on article three? Seeing no one standing before us to speak to article three. On my right.
Just, just quickly to the previous speaker, yes, this will be a replacement.
Thank you. On my right.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to ask the moderator if you would consider, if this passes upon the passage, would we make the article about the roof on the consent agenda to withdraw that?
That would be totally dependent when we get to that article. It is indep, each article is independent of itself. I would very honestly suspect that that would be the case, but I cannot answer for the proponent. So we have before us article three, which is to fund the FY 2013 capital plan by authorizing the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow the sum of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Because this is a borrowing article, it does require a two-thirds vote. I am going to try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes by a two-thirds vote. Article nineteen. Article nineteen is the community preservation fund transfer. May I have a motion from the finance committee?
I move that the town vote from the community preservation fund fiscal year 2013 estimated annual revenues, the sum of ten-thousand-four-hundred dollars for the community preservation fund administrative reserve, and three-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-two dollars for the FY 2013 budgeted reserve.
Do I have a second?
Madam Moderator, clarification. I believe this motion is missing the word "transfer." Is that correct? I was trying to read what was put in front of me, but it says, "I move that the town vote 'from,' and it should be 'to transfer from.'"
To "transfer from," you're correct.
Thank you.
It's a scripness error. So the motion before us, and with the second, is to move that the town vote to "transfer from" the community preservation fund FY 2013 estimated annual revenues. We corrected that as a scripness error. Thank you. We have a second.
It was printed correctly in the warrant.
To speak to the article.
Angela Dunham, CPC chair, precinct three. This is a housekeeping article. There's, sorry. This is a simple housekeeping article, transferring the money, just letting the taxpayers know.
Thank you. Do we have the vote of the board of selectmen?
Madam Moderator, board of selectmen voted five in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee voted favorable action five in favor, zero opposed, zero abstained.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on article nineteen, seeing no one at the microphones? I now will call for the vote on article nineteen, which is to "transfer from the community preservation fund FY 2013 estimated annual revenues." This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes by a majority.
Point of order?
State your point.
Regarding article two, I know we agreed on them all line by line, but did we have to take a formal vote collectively on article two?
No, we don't. We took them individually, so they, they stand on their own merit.
Thank you.
Point well taken, thank you. Article twenty-five. Article twenty-five is now before us to amend the waterways bylaw. May I have a motion from the finance committee?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town of Wareham waterways bylaw, Division Four, Article One, Section Two and Two A, as printed in the handout.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to speak to the article. On my right.
Good evening. I, I don't believe it's the handout. I believe it's the, the, what's in the warrant is what we're accepting. I just want to make sure there's no clarification problems.
Yeah, it was done as a handout, Gary, and I believe you had handouts available. I have the handout, and the handout, Matt should have up on the screen.
Okay, my handout that was given out at the front door is the existing two portions of the bylaw. The actual change is posted in your warrant. I don't know if that needs to be amended or changed. Just that wording, "handout to warrant."
If you would like to, and I would entertain it at this time, if you would like to-
Absolutely, if I could.
At the end of your presentation, make an amendment that is printed in the warrant.
Okay, do I, can I, can we do that first, or is that, or after I go through the-
Yeah, I'd go through the, the exercise of, we'll go through taking everything we do, and then I would call on you first to make the amendment.
Okay, the, proposing you tonight is a change to the waterways regulation, two portions. It's a three-portion bylaw, the first two portions, Section Two and Two A. It was originally passed in 1998. I followed the same fashion and bring it to the body with these two sections as they did at that time. What we did was, we were able to have a great base, which was the waterways bylaw, and we basically went through the bylaw and it was able, we were able to see what worked, what didn't work, work, and just streamline the process of issues that we- Thanks, sorry about that. To see what worked and what didn't work, and we were able to, to come up with the current changes which are printed in your warrant, the yellow book. It takes up page twenty-one through twenty-seven, I believe. To highlight some of the additions to the bylaw, we added a purpose, which is the first section of the page twenty-one. Basically, just to describe what the bylaw is there for. It, it shows, it establishes a process in which we designate moorings, how we manage the waterways, how we make it more efficient, how we, just for the future use. The second section, Section Two, boat regulations and harbor service permit, there wasn't much wording change. It basically states that all vessels shall obtain a permit when anchored in the waterways that follows within the guidelines of Chapter Ninety-One, Section Ten A, under the state laws. We are just basically riding along with the state laws, the state laws on that. And also, we put in some wording on anchoring of vessels. We have a, we've been having some problems with people coming in. They drop an anchor in a mooring field, that boat, they don't put the, the proper scope out, that vessel breaks its ground, and it drags into your boat that's sitting on your mooring. We don't know if they have insurance. You usually get stuck with a bill. And this gives us a little more power to designate under the bylaw as well as it dictates under state law. It's just in our wording now. So, moving through, there were no changes to a majority of that portion. We just carried our wording over. We added some wording such as online, we, you can pick up your applications now, you can print them up- print them up and mail them in accordingly, and the fee will be subject to review through the board of selectmen. Moving through to that, we have Section Two A, which is the Boat Regulations and Mooring Regulations. Basically, the start out of it is more descriptive than the previous, it gives you a little more information. Moving on to wintering of mooring gear, that it tightens up the regulations. We would like to see people put out certain types of material to be able to carry over their moorings in the wintertime, because the boats aren't on them. It allows their gear to have a little more longevity, so if you, when you come up for your three-year inspection, you have a better chance of your gear being in better condition because of the way that it's stored. What this does is, we do give them a timeframe, though. We want those winter sticks off by June first. If they're not done by June fifteenth, we initiate a fee, and we also change it, and we put it, or we may pull the mooring out. There's a reinstatement fee, as stated, at $75 for if those actions were to take place. It can be revoked if it does not get taken care of, we have the opportunity to revoke that mooring because we feel it's not being maintained and taken care of, and that opens that space up to the next person on the waiting list that could utilize that spot. It also states that any mooring that does not have a vessel on it, after December first, you will be required to put a winter stick out. It's part of the preservation, and most of the towns, we did look at various towns, as well as what we felt for regulations, and we felt that was more than sufficient. A lot of towns go with November one. The permit and renewal process. Originally, we used to have to send out certified mails, chase around who paid, who did not pay, and it turned into a lengthy process. As in most of your bills that you get in town, you have a bill that gets sent out, and a late fee that's imposed after a certain time. We're going to put the late fee on, and then after August first, you will get a certified letter at that point instead. It'll give you a small portion of time to either say you want the mooring or you don't, and we impose a $125 reinstatement fee, because after the tenth day, we will be pulling the mooring out. Basically, as it goes down, we talk about some mooring specifications for normal conditions. We can't get the proper scope for a lot of the boats for moorings to work as well as they should. The next best thing is wait or using a different type of gear. And one of the, one of the regulations we did impose was, we upgraded the size of the moorings, we pulled the concrete blocks out, we're going to be requiring all concrete blocks removed by January first of 2016. They have one year to comply, or you lose your mooring. We also, the biggest change will be that boats over 28 feet will be required to go to a helix mooring. That is not stating that everybody has to go to it, it's if your mooring system fails, or you renew, if you're a mooring that's just being put in place, if you wish to move or if you upgrade in size. And that goes through, there's some descriptions on what a helix is, and some hardware. Basically, that's it. We've increased some of the chain sizes and pendant sizes, it's pretty much cut and dry. Any more questions? Do you, how do I make the motion for this?
Hang on one second. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the vote of the board of selectmen on this matter was favorable action, five in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Sorry, Gary.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee's vote was seven favorable and zero against, and zero abstentions.
Thank you. Gary, I have a question for you. As printed in the warrant, is that exactly how you want all your changes to be made?
Yes. The handout is the existing, which will be being replaced. The way it's printed in the warrant will be how it's going to be inserted into the bylaw.
Okay. Then I would make a suggestion that you amend the motion that was made, that the town vote to amend the Town of Wayham Waterways Bylaw, Division Four, Article One, Section Two and Two A, as printed in the warrant. That would be your amendment.
That would be it.
So moved.
Have a second? Is there anything further to be said on Article Twenty-Five as amended? Seeing no discussion, your vote will come on the amendment, that the town will vote to amend the Town of Wayham Waterways Bylaw, Division Four, Article One, Section Two and Two A, as printed in the warrant. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment passes by a majority. The amendment now becomes the main motion. You have before you the same as your amendment. Again, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The article passes by a majority. Article Four is a police transfer. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the onset pier parking account the sum of $4,600 to the parking meter maintenance account for the purpose of defraying the operating expenses related to the onset pier parking.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Madam Moderator, this is a similar one that we have every year to defray the police costs for the onset pier parking. I believe we saw it last spring, and this year, we're doing it ahead of time rather than waiting till the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen voted favorable action, five in favor, no opposed, no abstentions.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted four, one, two.
Is there anything to be said on Article Four, seeing no one standing at the microphones? I will now call for a vote on Article Four. Article Four requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Ten is for cardiac monitor defibrillators. May I have a motion from the Finance Committee, please?
Yes, Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to fund a $15,000 account. Such account is to fund the town's 10% share of the Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters and Emergency Services grant award for the purchases, for the purchase of four cardiac monitor defibrillators for the use by Emergency Medical Services Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a second. To speak to Article Ten. Mr. Sullivan?
I'm going to ask Director of the EMS, Mr. Dave Evans, to stand up, please.
David Evans, EMS Director. We've applied for a Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters and Emergency Services grant to replace our four defibrillators. They're much more advanced than the AEDs, which are basically computer programs that recognize rhythms with erratic heartbeat that will defibrillate that. The units that we're asking for are an advanced machine that require paramedic use. You can recognize all the different cardiac rhythms. If you have a slow heartbeat, we can recognize it and give medications to raise your heartbeat. And if it's going too fast, also to slow it down with the proper medications. They also contain different modules to monitor your blood oxygen levels, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide levels, which is a new item that's required by the state for 2013. The models that we have now are 10 or 12 years old, they're not able to be upgraded, and this is a requirement that the state has in their treatment protocols, so we would have to meet that. The Department of Homeland Security allotted $285 million for assistance to firefighters and emergency services. Of that amount, 2% goes to non-affiliated EMS, which we qualify. That leaves $5.7 million, and that's a competitive grant program that's nationwide, so $5.7 million for the whole country. So we'd be lucky if we get our request funded in the amount of 149 and change. The town, with the town, our size, the population-based percentage is 10%, and that's just under $15,000. Where this is a requirement for 2013, if we don't get this grant award, we're going to have to fund this ourselves next year. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the board of selectmen voted favorable action, five in favor, none opposed, and no abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted six, zero, one.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Ten, seeing no one on my right?
CND Sullivan, Precinct Three, may I know the source of this funding?
To answer the question?
Yes, we're reducing the reserve fund by $15,000, which will give us $15,000 in available funds for it. Thank you.
Seeing no one standing for any further discussion, I now will call for the vote on Article Ten. Article Ten calls for majority vote. This article before you is to fund a $15,000 account, to fund the town's 10% share of a Department of Homeland Security grant for the purchase of defibrillators. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? May I have a motion on Article Number Nine?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town transfer, vote to transfer the sum of $85,000 from the harbor services permit receipts reserved for appropriations account to the harbor master's maintenance and improvement, improvements account.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a second. To speak to Article Nine. Mr. Sullivan?
If you see in the town meeting warrant under the explanations, you'll see that this is to fund a slew, if you will, of projects for the harbor master, including construct of a mooring slash work barge, patrol boat dockage, navigational aids. These are funds that are set aside primarily, well, for the harbor master and for the waterways on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Nine? Seeing no one standing to speak, I now will call for a vote on Article Nine. Article Nine requires a majority vote. The article before you is to...
Do you want to ask for the votes of the FinCom and the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Get a little sidetracked here, I apologize. Trying to move along and see...
You were motoring along, man.
I was trying to move along, I'm sorry. My goal was to just keep this moving. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen?
The board of selectmen voted favorable action, five in favor, none opposed, no abstentions.
May I have the vote recommendation of the FinCom?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven, zero, zero.
Thank you. Now, is there anything to be said on Article Nine? Seeing no one standing at the microphones, I'll now call for a vote on Article Nine. Article Nine requires a majority vote. What you have before you is to transfer the sum of $85,000 from the harbor services permits receipts reserved for appropriations account to the harbor master's maintenance and improvements account. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Twenty-Seven is to extend the dog bylaw study committee. May I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to extend the dog bylaw study committee, established pursuant to Article Thirty-Two, Spring 2012 Town Meeting, as amended, and for the currently appointed members of said committee, whose terms are due to expire November first, 2012, to continue serving thereon until Spring 2013 Town Meeting, for the ongoing purpose of drafting bylaws relating to barking and dangerous dogs, and/or to provide majority or minority reports relating to same to said Spring 2013 Town Meeting.
Do I have a second? I have a second. To speak to Article Twenty-Seven.
You've got to take the votes.
Nope, that's after.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening. This again is something that emanated from the dog bylaw study committee, as is explained in your written warrant. We were established in, by this body in the spring to look at and analyze and discuss proposed barking nuisance and dangerous dog bylaws. We were well engaged in the process, we had gone through several drafts, and thought we were in pretty good shape to come to this meeting with a set of dog bylaws for consideration by this body. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on what your viewpoint is here, the state, after several years of failed efforts, bills that died in committee and just went nowhere, finally got around to amending General Laws, Chapter One Forty, which is basically the state law that regulates the keeping and licensing of dogs. This happened at the end of August, we simply did not have time before the September seventh deadline to submit warrant articles to amend the bylaws of the town, to analyze the changes in the state law so that the drafts that we had been working on would be consistent with state law. So what the dog bylaw study committee is asking for here is an extension of our time to get this done until the spring. This would give us enough time to go through the state law, work further with town council to make sure that we don't have any conflicts, and to show up before this body again in the spring, either with bylaws for you to vote on, or minority and majority reports.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the board of selectmen?
That was a wonderful report. Board of selectmen voted favorable action, four in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention.
May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee voted favorable action, six in favor, one opposed, no abstentions.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article Twenty-Seven? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article Twenty-Seven, which is to extend the dog bylaw study committee. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Madam Moderator, I move the town transfer the sum of $30,000 from the waterways account to the harbor master's maintenance and improvement account.
Do I have a second? I have a second. To speak to Article Eight.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This transfer is being requested so that we may conduct a full conditions survey of the onset pier and to determine the extent of deterioration to the metal sheathing, piling, and steel fasteners. Just to head off any questions, after the last trans- Just to head off any questions, after the last transfer, there was still $81,176 left in the account. So, after this transfer of $30,000, if it went through, we would still have a little over $51,000 in the account. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
The Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven, zero, zero.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 8? Seeing no one standing, I now will call for a vote on Article 8, which is to transfer the sum of $30,000 from the waterways account to the Harbor Master's Maintenance and Improvement Account. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It just jumped out and rolled across the floor. We have, we have something under the table. Article 2. We did Article 2. No, we did Article 2. We did Article 2. It rolled off the table. Okay, we have Article 20 before us. We have just about five minutes. A motion on Article 20?
I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2013 estimated revenues under the category of historic preservation, the sum of $50,000 for the preservation and restoration of Old Town Offices at 505 Main Street, Center Park, Wareham.
Do I have a second? To speak to Article 20, on my left, Angela Dunham, CPC Chair.
Just a little background information on this. This is about the Old Town Office Building, which WCVB, is it? What is it? WCTV. Thank you. Sorry. Now occupies the building. The Town Office Building, now known as the Old Town Hall, was built in 1902, served until the present Memorial Town Hall opened in 1939 at 54 Marion Road. The first Town Hall was built in 1866, was on High Street. The Selectmen had voted to spend up to $1,000 to construct the building that would serve as a meeting place, hold a safe for town records, and include jail cells. This facility served until 1902, when the Old Town Hall was constructed. You'll bear with me for one moment, please. The Old Town Hall Restoration Project is included in the historical preservation strategy, which is to provide protection, preservation, rehabilitation, or restoration of town-owned properties of historic and/or cultural importance. In addition, the Town of Wareham's master plan under Section 8 states this, that the town should identify and protect significant historical and archaeological resources. The Old Town Hall has been included in our local historical inventory, done by the Wareham Historical Commission, and therefore should be preserved. This project will paint the building, will re-glaze the windows, and address lead paint issues.
Thank you. May I have a vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Madam Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee also voted favorable action, six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstain.
Thank you. To speak to the article, the gentleman on my left.
Madam Moderator, Bob Blair, Tam Barlow Ave. I'd like to make a motion to amend the article, to add the following wording, and that any work to be performed in accordance with Town Bylaws, Division 1, Article 4, Section 11A, that a certificate of appropriateness from the Wareham Historic District Commission be
Can you put that in writing, please? You have, do I have a second? We have an amendment before us, and I'm trying, going to try to go through this quickly because time is of the essence. Your amendment is to add the word at the end of the article, and that any work is to be performed in accordance with the Town Bylaws, Division 1, Article 4, Section 11A, which requires a certificate of appropriateness from the Wareham Historic District Commission. Do I have a second? Is there anything to be said on the amendment? Seeing no one standing, your vote will come on the amendment. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Point of order, Madam Moderator. I don't think the majority of us in this hall know what this amendment's about, and so I think we're voting on something blind. An explanation of the amendment would be in order.
Simply that the building is in the Center Park Historic District, and therefore, the Town Bylaws require that any exterior work done in the building receive a certificate of appropriateness and review by the Wareham Historic District Commission.
Thank you. We now have a vote before us on the amendment to add the words that any work will be performed in accordance with the Town Bylaws, Division 1, Article 4, Section 11A, which requires a certificate of appropriateness from the Wareham Historic District, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The amendment passes. It's now before you and becomes the main motion. Therefore, the main motion will be, as you see it on the screen, with the words added that I just previously read. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, we approaching the hour of 10 o'clock.
Madam Moderator.
Selectman Winslow?
I move to recess this meeting to tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM in the Wareham High School Auditorium.
Do we have a second? We have a motion before us to recess the meeting to tomorrow night at 7:00. Ladies and gentlemen, wait a minute before you get up and leave, because there sometimes can be surprises. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. It passes. We'll see you tomorrow night.